I will, thank.
Thanks very much. Looking around the room, I see that we have a quorum. And so I'll call the meeting to order. Before we get to the approval of agenda, we have Mr. Henry, who would like to participate electronically. Trevor has a medical reason for doing so. And so pursuant to our rules, we need to vote him into the meeting. Trevor, can I confirm before we vote that you can see the presentation and hear what we're saying?
Yes, sir. I appreciate the accommodation. I'm at my residence in the Whitehall District and asking to remote in for medical purposes today.
And we can hear him and I can see him on my screen, so.
Mr. Henry to join.
And I will second that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Trevor, you're now part of the quorum. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Okay, that takes us to the second item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. I trust everyone has received a copy as sent by Mike last week. Are there any changes or corrections need to be made? Move to approve the agenda then. All those in favor say aye. Hearing none, then the agenda is approved. We have an opportunity now for brief announcements by authority members. Anyone have any announcements?
I would just mention, since he's not here, Jason gave a really nice presentation to the Nancy Advisory Committee.
I saw Jason on the air, you know, a couple of weeks ago. He's got a pretty good onscreen persona. Trevor, anything from you?
Nothing from me, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the authority? If so, use your raise hand function and we'd be happy to give you your three minutes of time to address us. We'll wait just a second, see if anybody wants to do that. We have six, well, counting Waldo.
Augie's on to Augusta. Okay. Another server.
Okay.
But yeah, Gary Wood and Chris Dillon from Brightspeed, Dennis Reese and Gary Wood from Firefly. Robert Silver.
But no one's raising their hand. So we will move on to the consent agenda. That was distributed with the agenda. Anyone have any comments or concerns about the consent agenda? Motion to approve that. Motion second. All those in favor say aye. Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Our learned secretary, Ms. Fritz, has distributed February meetings, so the February 28th meeting. I trust everyone had an opportunity to see those. Bill, did you receive any substantive comments back or corrections?
Just some typos and Waldo made some excellent suggestions to clarify language, but it didn't change the substance.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Second. Very good. Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye. Hearing no opposition? Meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much, Bill. Full business. Body 2021 update.
Thank you, Chair. There's two slides here that you see with your handout. The good news is, is that the last of the areas has been activated and we heard today, just today, and why it's not in the update, that at least two of the 10 have subscribed already and have service. So not only have they gone in and subscribed that to the service, Brightspeed was able to go out and make the connection. So we're really happy about that. So that's, that's the real positive thing that's going on. We have a couple more phases that we need to go through with Brightspeed and one of the most important is verification of invoices so that we can request reimbursement. If the board recalls, there's two different types of reimbursement that'll happen with this project. One is for the funding that the broadband authority put toward the project. And that funding has been reduced slightly. And Brightspeed put in an initial invoice, but we asked for more specifics. So we're going back around just to make sure that the amount that they're asking for can be justified against the amount of equipment that is in the field and the number of passings that they are hoping as we pay for are body passes, Virginia Telecommunication Initiative passings. So that's the first phase, the smaller of the two invoices. The second invoice will be one that the broadband authority will have to approve for reimbursement through the state. So that has a second process which the state goes through and reviews. And if they see that everything looks clear and we think that everything looks clear, they'll issue the funding back to the broadband authority. The broadband authority will work with the finance department and issue another payment to Brightspeed. So optimistically, at your April 24th meeting, just to make clear, that's 22 days from now. If, unless the board decides to have a different setup for meetings, but we hope, we hope to have that first invoice for you all to see and make sure that we can get the payment processed by that time. So that's where we are with that, that part of it. And I think I covered both of my slides with one discussion, didn't I? Yes, I did. So that's the Body 21 update. Any questions to help answer?
The two of the 10?
We don't know. They, they, yeah, there's just a little bit of explanation on what's called customer, what is it? Customer public network information, CPNI. Brightspeed is not allowed to tell us in detail who the customers are. So they're looking through and, you know, their, their first, their first glimpse of it, I guess, was there's two. So there may be more, hopefully not less. Hopefully, hopefully the subscribers they have out there are going to stay on, but we'll find out later if more, if more of the 10 sign up. Yeah, good question though. Yeah.
Any other questions for Mike?
21.
That should take us on to the amendment?
Yes, I'm sorry. I did miss that. Thank you, Chair. So the amendment went through a couple of processes, both with Brightspeed legal and with the county legal, and we've come to the agreement that the way it stands now, it's applicable and can be applied. It's, it's background material to make sure that the conversations as well as the meetings we had with D H C D all fit within the process of the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative or Body. So to, to make sure that we were doing everything correctly, we thought it was important to have this First Amendment. And essentially it reflects what was put into the letter of intent. So broadband accessibility and affordability office is recommending that the broadband authority knew for with allowing or suggesting that the chair sign this so that we've got a set of documents that were referenced back to the letter of intent in a more formal manner. So the request is the broadband authority authorize the chair to sign this, this amendment?
I have a question for Mr. Deloria.
She?
You've had a chance to negotiate with and/or provide feedback on this document to your counterpart on the other side of the fence and.
So I drafted the, the original amendment.
Okay, so we're the originators. Okay.
And, and then, so then I conferred with Mike and with Jason at length. We went back and forth on that and eventually they presented it to to Brightspeed and then Brightspeed had some comments. I think they had two round comments. And then we had some clarifications. I know they added some terms that I'm not saying they were foreign to us, they were kind of new to us. So we said, well, let's go ahead and define those and they freely bought, they defined those and we included those in the agreement. So, and then they signed it. We, we said we were good at this point in time, sent it off and as Sherwood, she, she signed it and sent it back. I, I will say, I haven't, since she sent it back and I haven't had it, I mean, it was the same agreement, but I haven't had an opportunity to look at it. And so the motion is really to, to approve it as to the, to the current form and then authorize the chair to sign it. If, if it, if the final product material is materially the same as this, I don't anticipate changing this because we did work through that unless this body says something different at this point in time and otherwise that the motion is essentially to approve it as to form. And I will go through it again and confirm that it matches up with everything that we previously said. But if there's some there are changes, then those have to be made and then sent back to the company.
Any questions, concerns, comments?
I will be concerned by the whole process that has led to the point where we.
How we got here.
All of that aside.
Given, given that, given, given that, that we, that's kind of a stick. I would move that we use the language Richie just uttered in terms of authorizing the chair to sign this agreement once it has been determined that it is, it is same in form as the agreement that was sent out of here. In other words, basically, once Richie makes sure it's okay, I can, I can execute this and we can move forward.
Second.
Director Walsh.
Aye.
Director Jay Quill.
Aye.
Director Henry?
Yes.
Director Fritz?
Aye.
Director Andrews?
Well, thank you all very much. I, I know these things don't come into life without a lot of work behind the scenes. I appreciate that work getting it done.
I, I'd like to acknowledge the significant amount of work that has gone into this amendment so that we can ensure that exactly 10 additional passings exist in Albemarle County. Let it not be said that we have not put the work in, obviously we have done nothing on this. Y'all have not put the work in, but as a county, so we have not put the work in to serve as many people as we possibly can here.
And I'm optimistic that at least two of those folks are already happy.
I wonder if they have any concept as to how much work has gone into making sure that they specifically have service. And of course I feel for the other, what was it, 36? Folks who we hoped would be covered and we're not done trying to get them served.
Well, we squeezed a little money out of the contract from this, so that's funny. We might feel the repurpose to help them out. At a future.
Yeah.
All right. Good. So moving on, can we go on to Body 2022?
Yes, sir. Construction work continues. There's a lot of activity. We were part of the first meeting of the year to go over a quarterly update that Firefly presented through T J P D C, and that was a positive update. One update on this particular slide is Dominion made the submissions to the S E C and two weeks ago they approved the final. So all of the S E C, I mean, all of the Dominion middle mile work has been approved through the State Corporation Commission in Albemarle.
Excellent. Expected news.
Right. That's expected news and it's certainly going on. There's a lot of activity. You'll see Firefly trucks and their partners out there doing a lot of great work. A E P specifically Appalachian Power has been adding additional crews. So hopefully that particular work in the southern part of Albemarle specifically in Keene, there'll be a lot more activity there as we move through the project. Another big positive that's happened with the project map that you see in front of you is that a lot of the project areas have now been named, which was an ongoing issue. Someone would call in and say, I'm in Rise, but which of these projects do I belong to? And now we've got some of those being activated and they have detailed pages that come up once you click on that specific project. So you'll see a more detailed map of the, the project area. And then each time Firefly puts out a notice, for instance, if, if someone's out there doing make ready work, Firefly sends letters to all of the people who are in the impacted area and they keep a, a copy of the letter up on their website. So it's a really positive way of getting the word out there. So as I said, there's, there's all of the projects that you see, most of these have been added since the last time we met. You know, there's, there's only been one little short step in the road. Hopefully it'll be verified soon. There's some easements that are needed along Gordonsville Road. So that is a project area that a number of the broadband authority members are aware of that is impactful to St. John Road. So a, a project area out in the northeast corner of Albemarle. It's being slightly held up. We hope there'll be a that gets through that. The project has not has not changed. Spring of 2024 means that connections may start as late as in the middle of June. So the first connection in spring 2024 could happen as, as late as June and then the additional connections could happen through the summer. Spring 2024 means first connection and it could be one house and then the rest of the houses come in July, for example. But just, just to be clear.
A whole bunch of spring 2025 dropped onto that list, which is pretty exciting.
It's, it's pretty, we're getting close, so it's going to, there's going to be a lot of activity on the website as, as well as in, in the field. So a lot of great work going on there. So we're, we're excited to keep, keep monitoring this and hopefully not a lot of these are going to move out, you know. Firefly is very clear when they put these schedules up that these are all subject to, to change. So it's possible that one or more of these may change. So that's, I think that was it I had on the 20.
I've got some questions about that.
Okay, the map itself?
Well, the, this schedule in the right, a couple of questions. One, I see the very last entry is Rise Albemarle. What does that mean? That means all the, the Swiss cheese holes?
Yes, and well, it's not, our project is different. The ARPA grant, the, the newly project, newly minted project, it's actually been going on for a while. But we have, we have our contracts. That's, that's another good piece of news. We, we made it through the contractual process of that last week, so. Firefly assigned. The Rise Albemarle that you see there are just the, the final few pieces that they're going to name as Dominion Tower Project.
I see. So that's basically the balance. Whatever those bits are will be completed at some date, probably after summer 2025.
Yes.
That sounds like the impossible future, but it's actually somewhere next year. Okay.
Yes, right close.
Second question.
You know, the ARPA grant itself, the money that the Board of Supervisors put forward as well as the the broadband authority put forward are all American Rescue Plan Act funds. They have to be committed by the end of this year, which means they have to be encumbered. The, the benefit of Firefly being our partner for this is that as they're working on the already funded through Body projects, those, those same activities can be extended into your Swiss cheese hole. So they essentially become part of each of these additional projects.
Okay.
The ARPA funded passings that are through B A A O, through the ARPA funds that the Board of Supervisors and the broadband authority provided, those subscribers or customers or members, however you want to refer to them, are going to receive the same notification as a, as a Body as a Body customer would. It's just in the backend, we have to be very certain that we're not.
Really paying for one, not the other.
Exactly. So it's a, it's a lot of like detailed work that has to go on. So we, we don't upset Treasury.
So my, yes, please don't upset. I, I also work at Treasury. So yes, please, please don't upset us. The second question, which I appreciate, you may personally not be the best person to answer. I'm curious about the gap between so much that has been connected and being connected between now and June 20th. And then there's nothing else scheduled for 365 days. Well, minus a season perhaps. Do we know what the underlying causes of that delay?
With the Chair's permission, I could promote Gary or Dennis.
And I shouldn't have said delay. Delay relative to what? Of that gap of the schedule.
I would say with all of them, with the people who know, as those of us who want to opine, speak, sure, that would be great, Mike.
Okay.
If, if either one of them was available and can speak, looks like Gary's taking himself off mute. And Dennis too, so.
Gary, can you hear us? Mr. Wood?
Uh, I, I could speak. This is Dennis Reese. I mean, Dominion's doing some good work. We, we do have, uh, you know, we do have to wait for their work to be finished and then we're still finalizing our design once they finish theirs. In some, some, some cases, they're moving the access points, so we're having to wait for their, them to finalize those for us to do our design and then at that point we can look at the dates a little bit better. Cause we still have to do the underground construction after they finish their work or, or simultaneously in some cases. So our, our goal is to get everybody connected as soon as possible, but right now this is our, our projected timelines. For now and our, you know, of course our goal is to finish everything by the by end of summer 2025.
Okay. Okay. And we rather have a timeline that is reflects reality than of our Body 2021 work in which we repeatedly given deadlines that like we have eyes, we can see. They're not going to meet this. So if you don't think it'll be still spring 2025, I'm awfully glad to hear that. Thank you.
Dennis, this is Bucky. Have you scheduled from Dominion as to when they'll be delivering things to you yet?
Uh, I mean, we, we know which areas have, they've started construction on and which areas are, are completed. And which ones are in the prog, are, are being released, but there are a few areas in pockets here and there where they are still doing, dealing with rot away issues. And, you know, those uh, make it a little bit unpredictable.
Thank you, sir.
And this is Gary. Let me add just a little more background to a couple of these. There are a couple that have some unique characteristics. In Batesville, for instance, most of our work office Dominion is going to be underground. But right along in the village of Batesville where we need to come off of a few poles, there's just no room for underground next to the creek and the road. So we're going to have to have some pole attachments. Pole attachments for Dominion take a little longer. That's part of the reason we're going underground in most areas. Uh, so we know Batesville will likely take as, as much as six months just to get into the rotation for the Dominion pole changeouts. So that's one of the reasons in, in Batesville. And a couple of these, we know that they're having a few more easement issues as Dennis said, and that may push it out. Uh, and then the final thing I will tell you is that our, our engineers internally have have taken a little bit of a beating over the past five years for some of their estimates and, and going back to Waldo's point. It's easier to apologize for getting there early than for being late. I am hopeful that we will certainly get to a couple of those sometime in, you know, the winter of 24, 25 or spring of, of 25, early spring. This is also supposed to be for the start of connections, but I, I think we'll beat a few of those dates that are out in 25.
Any other questions? Dennis, Gary, thank you both very much for the excitement in the room here. So we're delighted to see a bunch of new dates. Thank you.
All right.
Mike, I think that takes us to the Body 2022.
Yeah, we've got.
Through the Body 2022. Is there anything else there?
There, there.
Some updated.
Here we go. E C provides on a quarterly basis to all of the, all of the counties themselves. So this is during their quarterly updates. They provide this information and it goes out as an email as well. And then for each of the 15 counties involved, the next slide goes, goes through the detail. And we started just adding, you know, the prior months to our month, current month. And that, that gives you a, you know, we're moving along not as quickly as anyone would like. We're paying our bills. So the good news is, is that T J P D C invoices us. We go through the process of making sure those invoices are correct and then finances. Finance is on schedule with all of our payments so far. So you know, six payments already done in this project. We're you know, quarter of the way there, maybe a little more. We're going to see the invoice amounts increase as the project continues, but it's certainly, uh, certainly moving along on the financial side. We don't, haven't seen any hiccups yet. So that's, that's really good news. Things are working. Any questions about the metrics, the data that's being presented?
I've, I've got a question here. Am I correct? In the distinction to approaches that with the work that CenturyLink and then Brightspeed did, that they did all of the work and said, we'll just invoice at the end. And the approach that we're seeing here is we're going to do work, we're going to give you updates on the work and you're going to pay us in exchange for the work that we've done.
Yes, more of a, a quarterly schedule at least.
Okay.
And it's through T J P D C.
Sure.
You know, Firefly is relying on T J P D C providing them with reimbursement. And D H C D, D H C D has to approve T J P D C's monthly report. So each monthly report that T J P D C puts into the state also has included a remittance request. So that remittance request, T J P D C looks, looks at, provides provides them with the funds and then they, they go forward and pay Firefly.
Okay.
Then, you know, the interesting thing is then Firefly has a whole nother set of payments that they have to do to all their subcontractors as well as their partners. So it's, it's complex on the financial side.
Yeah. Okay. It's my, my my work, which is about budgeting, procurement and oversight of big software projects in government. It is my observation that the best companies will bill constantly as they go and bad companies will not because they know that oversight is tied to the provision of money. And so if you wait until the money is awarded at the end, then the oversight is, as you're going to be have to doing with Brightspeed here, you have to go back to, okay, what was all the work that they did over that time, big time period? Instead of, no, what did they do in the past 30 days or the past 90 days, which is easier to measure? I have no idea the extent to which the work that I do on software has much applicability here, but I'm going to take this as a little endorsement. It maybe there's something to be said for a constant oversight billing.
There is another distinction though. There's maybe two orders of magnitude difference between the sizes of the Body 2021 project and the Body 22, 22 project.
See, that doesn't want to carry this on their books.
The overhead of billing, you know, on a monthly or quarterly basis, when there's that much difference really starts to add up. So there may be some other business factors.
Okay. Well, that's very interesting to make that contrast, if only for my amusements.
Mr. Wood has his hand up. Oh, okay. Well, we can talk. You're still set. You're still set, Gary.
All right. And I apologize. I will quit jumping in, but the one thing that we, we don't report, the state asks that we just report the number of passings that become active so that it's possible to connect. Uh, so when we finish splicing, we, we report a number. We don't show active connections and that's the last piece that actually happened. And sometimes when you see this and you say, well, there's, there was fairly minor activity, we actually have connected several hundred locations in the A E P Red Hill area and we've connected our first Rappahannock customers in northern Albemarle up near, is it Markwood Road and Simmons Gap? And areas up there. So we are making progress in connections. That's the final piece. That's the least expensive piece, but the most impactful piece. So that isn't shown on here and I just wanted to make sure you knew that we were still working in Albemarle, even though this shows little in the way of large progress in that, that month between January and February.
I want to call up, which I'm sure I've said before, but it. I want to call up, which I'm sure I've said before, but it bears repeating, how much I appreciate in all conversations that involve Firefly and Seaback, the enormous level of detailed knowledge that they have at their fingertips about the local geography and how customers are being served there because they are of the community. How helpful that is for us to understand the work that's being done and who's being served. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Gary. All right.
All right.
We go on to the BAO update?
I'll be brief. There's a ACP Bridge White Paper. Just to bring the board up to speed, the broadband accessibility and affordability office was provided funding through the Board of Supervisors to help offset lower income residents broadband fees. And we call that ACP Bridge and we worked with a couple of providers to get that activated. With the Affordable Connectivity Program going away, we still have funding available, so we're working on ways to, to make that happen. We've got the ACP Bridge White Paper and it's getting somewhat national attention that this, this may be a way for local governments, state governments to put together something that the federal government has not been able to pass, the ACP Extension Act. So the Affordable Connectivity Program Extension Act is still out there to help, help Congress understand the importance. But this may be a time when counties, states, cities who have funding available can bridge the gap between ACP coming back, or if it doesn't come back, hopefully another program that helps the lower income community residents be able to afford broadband. So the ACP Bridge White Paper is out there. We're also going through a, a pretty significant process of winding down. It's not really the county's initiative. It is a initiative of all of our providers. So whether it's Brightspeed or Firefly or Comcast or Lumen or Lumos, they all have to notify their ACP participants that you know, the, the last likely payment for them, the thirty dollars a month payment for credit toward their bill will end as of the April payout. So you know, there's, there's a lot of activity that's going on to help that happen. One of the things that the broadband accessibility and affordability office is doing is we're we're, we're helping people along. We're helping people along. So if someone calls us and indicates, you know, look, I've been on ACP for a year. I still qualify. How do I requalify? Well, there's no way to requalify because the program is ending, so that's our bad news. But we can also direct them to other low cost options and help them decide, you know, how am I going to bridge this gap? One of the things that we're working on and it's not quite ready to, to announce yet, we're, we're going to try to get this done prior to maybe our, maybe the broadband authorities may be, is have, have the ability to provide some additional funding while we wait for ACP to be reactivated or otherwise. So it's going to be an interesting time. We understood that it was a possibility that the ACP would run out, but everyone was really hopeful that Congress would find a way to put the Extension Act in place. There's a lot of people who are impacted by this, but I won't go into a whole lot of details, but it's just a, a project that we're working on and we hope to provide some updates and no, no additional requests for funding, but we're just going to go through and use the funding that we already have to help, help people wind down their ACP without having to give up their access to the internet or other things. So that's it from the BAO side.
The providers are, are sort of working with them to let them know that this is happening.
Yes.
But they said you suggested they also were possible other ways to find help?
Oh, other low cost options.
Low cost options on their service.
Through the providers. So we'll help the providers advertise or, or make sure that people have notice of what, what the other options are. Yeah.
Any questions?
I'm on the NACO Telecommunications and Technology Steering Committee and they reached out. They're one of the groups that reached out. They, NACO wants to highlight the ACP Bridge program and push that out to other organizations through NACO's resources. So it's, it is getting some press and people are, people are picking up on it.
I'm, I'm still just in awe of the number of people who are taking advantage of, or had been taking advantage of the ACP Bridge program. Any other questions or comments for Mike? Thank you very much. That brings us to new business. We have none scheduled, but I would entertain any new business that anyone from the authority had to bring. Not seeing any government excess at this moment. Then are there any other matters we need to talk about or consider? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? All those in favor say aye. Hearing no opposition, this meeting is adjourned. I thank you all very much. And thanks, Trevor, for, for dialing in.
Yes, sir. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate the accommodation.
Thank you.
Next meeting, April twenty-fourth. Okay. All right, y'all.
It's one of those blue moon kind of months.
Short turnaround.
Blue moon month and an eclipse month.
Yeah, don't stare at the sun.
Do you have binoculars or anything you're taking with you?
Oh, sure.
The diamonds.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was amazing. As it goes down all the valleys, if you have really good binoculars.
And I did, I did not see that at that last time.
I, I was able to say.
These things where.